This evening, our first order of business will be a presentation to the board by Matt Chatfield on the 2020 Unified Planning Work Program Funding Opportunity. So Matt, we welcome you and forward to what you have to say.
Good evening. Close enough to the mic. Again, for record, Matt Chatfield, Webster Economic Development Alliance. And we are the nonprofit local development preparation in Webster. A public-private partnership, town, village, school district, chamber of commerce, and business improvement district here in the village, charged with coordinating economic development activities on behalf of those entities. And one of the things that we do often is we identify potential grant funding resources and opportunities for the town and the village and the possible school district and potentially private parties. And as part of that, help I bring those funding sources home to Webster. We've been very successful as of late at the year. And tonight, I'd like to talk about another funding opportunity before us today. Every year, the Genesee Transportation Council, which is the regional nine-county entity that's charged with distributing federal transportation funds, those funds are distributed from the federal government and allocated to our metropolitan area, to the GTC. They dole out the funds according to separate funding allocations. One of them is for planning projects that help identify future investments in the transportation system, that that can be planned in a rational way. And from there, they identify potential projects from that program that could then be funded in the future with actual hard dollars towards construction. The village was successful with this particular program back in 2012 with the CAP study, the Circulation Accessibility and Parking Study, which was ultimately led to the improvements of the North Avenue Connector and the $815,000 that the village was awarded two years later to provide for the sidewalks, the, and the streetscape improvements, and of course, the beautification enhancements on North Avenue. So the village has successfully utilized this program in the past, and this year, the funding is yet again available. The announcement came out September 11th, so it's only been two weeks, and the funding applications are due on October 16th. They only gave us, they only give us five weeks to really identify projects, move them forward, and then apply for the funds. So today, I want to give you a quick overview of the program. You should have a handout in front of you.
What do you think date, I'm sorry, what do you think date that they have to be in by October?
Sixteenth, three weeks from tomorrow. Right. So if the first page of your handout talks about the UPWP program, it's the acronym, everything's acronyms nowadays. There's about 900,000 allocated for that this fiscal year. Typically, the GTC sees about 1.3 to 1.5 million dollars of applications. So it's competitive, and they run out of money every year. So the, the, the funds are doled out fully every year, and there are applications that are turned away, and it's just part of the process. You try again the next year and enhance your application. GTC planning funds, physical improvements to the transportation system, they're not for actual construction, but they're for planning for physical improvements. Non-infrastructural services such as maybe transportation-related services for mass transit, and the integration of transportation and land use, which is a little bit where, what I want to expand upon today and talk about a potential opportunity that we have discussed internally here with the village. So the projects that are eligible are concept-level planning, analysis, and design initiatives. So this is not for hard engineering, this is not for construction. These are for preliminary projects to push them forward and identify what the next phase of those projects would be in asking for actual funds to do the engineering and then construction. And then they have to be consistent with the long-range transportation plan. So the Genesee Transportation Council comes up with this real long-term, this long-term plan, and there's a bunch of different criteria that they are hoping to, or goals, I would say, goals that they're hoping to achieve, and you need to provide a proposal and a project that's going to help meet a certain number of those goals, and you need to describe how you go about doing it. And then what are the benefits of having, of going through this process? Well, based on the precedent experience that the village has already had, identifying that plan, the CAP study plan, if we go back to that example, that plan resulted in a design, potential, you know, design guidelines being developed for the streetscape within the village. It identified pedestrian connectivity improvements that were made, not with actual federal transportation dollars, but for example, the NOCO redevelopment, now Speedy, or Quickly, right? The, the NOCO, everybody knows which one I'm talking about. When that was redeveloped, there was a sidewalk connection that was, a pedestrian connection that was enhanced between the rear parking lot and, and, and Main Street. And that came straight out of a recommendation from your CAP study, and of course, all the other improvements that flowed from that North Avenue Connector project. So it identifies those, those enhancements that we can make to our transportation system, and then allows the village to enact those improvements. And then part of the study could be outcomes and that are inserted into your comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan update. And it also enhances your likelihood of obtaining additional funding for improvements, state and federal dollars. It gives you preference and priority for transportation dollars that come out of the federal government. So there are many benefits to going through this process. And as part of this, I actually sat down with, with Jake last week, we sat down and we brainstormed, and Jake has identified an area within the North End Business District, which is what we're calling, is an area that we would like to potentially study further for how we can enhance the transportation network, the bike pad network, and then of course, you know, some land use decisions regarding areas on Donovan, Commercial, and potentially some areas along Orchard Street as well. And it was identified at that time that this is, that there really is an opportunity for actually a cross-jurisdictional application here between town and village. Because a part of the, a lot of the, a lot of the lands that we're talking about incorporating, the map that you have in front of you, there's a first map, there's a blue line that you should see on that plan. That blue line represents the town-village boundary. So north and west, or north and to the left of that line, there's the town, and below and to the right is the village. However, all of the infrastructure that's in, in this particular neighborhood, it all ends up coalescing together. And we, Jake and I identified some potential target areas that, you know, that could be looked at further for enhancement. As well, there's a lot of other potential land use decisions that will need to be made in the coming, you know, 10 years or so. The next, the next map indicates some potential land use considerations, where potential residential development may happen in the future, identifying where potential mixed use, commercial and residential development could happen, and also identifying those public open space locations that currently exist. And then the opportunity through this program would be, how does this all work together? How do we provide a plan for the development of that area north of 104 that's cohesive, that provides some identity for that neighborhood and that business district that is distinct from the Four Corners District? And also takes into consideration what you'll see on the next, on the next map, which is the vast trail network and public and pedestrian bicycle infrastructure in this area. It's a very important part of our transportation system, and this particular study area is the convergence of multiple different trail systems within the whole, within all of Webster, not just, not just the village itself. And of course, the towns, Recreation Center, it lies just to the north of this proposed study area, and North Ponds Park lies just to the west. So, and the North End Business District is smack dab in the middle. So there's, there's a real opportunity here to study, how can we make this area grow properly in the future? And how can we use the transportation network, both vehicular and then bike pad, to enhance that, and then obviously, open up opportunities for, for private development on those vacant lands or those lands that are underutilized, including lands that are currently within the Xerox campus. So just, we quickly, Jake and I quickly just sketched out some bubble diagrams on, on a plan to identify some target areas, that's the last map. We haven't identified what, you know, there's, we're not conducting the study right now, we're actually just trying to surmise what would be priority target areas should the village decide to move ahead with a study and application for funds. And the target areas identified would be the Donovan Street corridor and the lands around it. There's some industrial area that's been vacant and long-hoped for development at the end of Donovan, but nothing's come to fruition. Obviously, there's a target area north of Orchard Street, it's called the West Complex part of Xerox. There's a lot of potential in this area with 35 acres of vacant land and all the infrastructure that's there for this to become something special, but as of right now, we haven't had the opportunity to envision what that could be. This study would help come up with that vision. And then the area of Commercial Street and, and Martin, as it, as it turns up to Martin. And connecting all these things together is village roads and then public trail systems. So that's largely the, the opportunity that seems to be some looking and fruit for this particular grant program. And the criteria moving forward would be that, you know, the typical project size is 60,000 to 100,000 dollars. That's the typical planning project. GTC requires 10% matching funds. So your typical matching fund, matching size is 6,000 to potentially 12, 6 to 12,000 dollars. That can be cash or in-kind services provided by staff. It does not have to be cash loan. Okay? But the funds do need to be expended first, and I, and I would need to understand if the funds can be invoiced on a regular basis or if they can only be invoiced all at once. They may be invoiced periodically, but I do need to find an answer to that question. So the next steps would be that if the village was interested in considering this, this grant program, and then obviously, considering the location that, that Jake and I have recommended, the next steps would be to have a discussion of whether or not you wanted it to be a joint town-village application. That being said, inter-municipal applications are looked upon very favorably. The cooperation of municipalities is looked upon favorably when it's related to transportation, because roads don't care where the municipal boundary is. They don't recognize that, and neither do cars. So working together is what the GTC would really like to see. The deadline again is October 16th. It gives us three weeks. It takes me about a week and a half to two weeks of pretty much solid work to put together an application. So there's not a whole lot of time, unfortunately. We were on, this, we're two weeks from when the announcement was made, we're one week from when Jake and I sat down to go over what our, what the, what the opportunity we thought was. So I think we moved about as quickly as we possibly could. The timeline is just very tight.
Do you care what time frame it would be, 6 to 12,000?
So the funding, you would not be able to expend any funding until April of 2021?
Oh, okay.
Okay? And then obviously, at that point, they want you to commit to providing the funds, but in the end, you're not actually expending those funds until, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to expend any funds towards that project for reimbursement until April of 2021. And at that point, you still wouldn't expend the funds because you're going to hire a consultant, you're going to go through the procurement process. I don't see this project actually kicking off until probably August at the, at the earliest, August of 2021, at the earliest should you be successful in getting the funding.
So my question then would be, this typical match, so we would look for what the grant would be, and then we would be matching that in somewhat proportion. Is that correct?
Correct. So what I provided you was almost like a worst-case scenario. A hundred thousand dollar study is about the max that they will fund. So the maximum commitment that you'd be making on a match would be 10,000 dollars, plus or minus, within a few thousand dollars. But it's not anything, it's very, it's not very sizable.
Right.
And that could be a mixture of cash and in-kind. Okay? So that could be, that could be Jake's time, that could be staff time towards that, towards that, you know, the project management of that, of that effort, and then cash. And they do it on, they do include fringe benefits, so the in-kind match actually gets, goes pretty quickly on an hourly basis.
If we were considering a joint application with the town, would that then involve consideration outside of the village area? So that we would be looking, for example, as part of that target area three and the parkland, if you will, or the trails and North Ponds, that would be involved with the town?
As, as we drew, the, the study area we drew intentionally didn't consider the municipal boundaries because we tried to identify a boundary for a study area that made sense within the transportation network. This current boundary does cross, the current study area does cross that municipal boundary. So yes, it would, if you were to consider an application that included this full study area, it would be wise to consider a joint application with the town.
But if we were looking at what you had initially proposed, which was, I believe it was the Donovan and Commercial part of that, and then it would not?
Correct. Yep. It would be, it would be, you know, up to you to decide what the study area boundary would be.
If I'm correctly, you would limit, you know, basically, one of the transportation systems, if you will, that's included in the study, you know, the hiking trails and things, because there's not, in those two target areas, there's not a lot of that. We might be more, you know, include all the connections that are located right in that area, right?
Correct. The, the intention of the, like I said, the intention of the study area boundary as it is today was to, was to maximize the area, the components of the transportation system that would be included, and how they all relate to drawing people in to the North End Business District. So the, the trail network, the roadway network draws people in from the neighborhoods in the surrounding areas and draws them in to that central area that is not the really what we call our central business district. We're trying to identify that North End Business District, give it some identity, and then plan for its, you know, potential growth. So the, the expanded study area does have that, does have that benefit. Typically, transportation planning studies should have a broad, a broad enough study area that they encompass enough of the transportation network and some land uses. Individual corridors, small stretches, a half mile here, a half mile there, I, unless there was significant reason for it, I don't see the strength of the application if it was just Commercial and Donovan Streets. That's just from, just from my perspective. I don't see it being a very strong application.
So what was your point with these three target areas?
So there's, right. So, so when we look at the, so you look at the, the hope was, there would be areas of focus, but then there would be areas of consideration. So the transportation network that would be considered would be Orchard, the trail networks, and how they all, you know, and work together, including the Toyota Trail, the Bird Sanctuary Trail, and how that, and, and North Ponds Park. So how that unified system works, yet from a land use component, right, the combining or the, the effort to combine transportation and land use, those land use considerations are within those target areas. The transportation component stretches beyond those, those target areas. So if there's going to be planning for land use and development and, you know, development scenarios, it would largely take place in those target areas. Whereas the transportation planning, this planning for the trail network, those connections, the roadway network, would extend beyond, which is why the study area boundary is where it is. Is that a clear enough explanation? No?
You can join these places either geographically or by use, you know, so you can't pick a one small geographic location where the trail network is because it encompasses all of it. So one of those areas might be, you know, like you said, the areas of focus might be the trail system or the, you know, alternate transportation to, to the road network, but then there's other areas for development, like you said, there's residential or mixed use or commercial industrial areas. You know, some of those are geographic, some of them are by use, not by area, you know, so it's a different way to look at tying them together.
Correct. The goal was to create a broad enough study area boundary to make a compelling application, understanding that from the village's perspective, there would be goals to, to work on the land use components within the village sector, and if the town was going to have any interest in participating, that there would be interest in looking at some of the infrastructure and land use components within the town. So the goal is to make a compelling application that meets the needs of both municipalities and will provide, you know, a reasonable justification for them to do this in concert, rather than attempting to look at these two areas separately, or this one area separately. So it's, it's just a recommendation, and there's lots of, I imagine that as this, if this study was to move forward, there would be a lot of changes to the scope of work, amendments to that, and a lot more detail would come out of it. At this point, what you see before you is the result of a 45-minute to 60-minute meeting that Jake and I had to try and flesh out what we could do within the time allotted to apply for funding.
I like the idea.
So did that answer, it all has, all the answers aren't there, and we haven't thought it all through yet.
Yeah.
We still need some additional time to do it.
We need basically a week. I'm going to consider a week, it takes you two weeks to do it.
Yeah.
I would, I would definitely need a good, I would, I would need a commitment to move forward at the next meeting that you guys have, which is when? Either, either workshop or board meeting.
It'll be great.
Yeah, that's not enough.
There, we just have to reach out to Tom and get to talk with him.
Have you talked to Tom?
I have.
Okay, that's, okay.
Are you going to make a presentation to the entire town board?
I, I was planning on doing that next week.
Good.
However...
All right, so that kills a week right there, talking about this is going to be a joint application, right?
Well, I, I can say this, if, if the village board is not interested in picking it up, I don't see the town board interested in picking, in, in joining.
Primarily the area is.
It's largely the village lead.
Exactly.
It's a village lead. Absolutely, it's a village lead.
Yes.
But it's a, it's a joint project that would benefit both the town and the village.
Well, we've been talking about the Donovan, and I don't know, for a couple of years now, that we were going to try and do something, and I think this is a great idea. I'm all for it. I know, I know, but it last, we got serious in the last couple of years, but then nothing got done with it, so I'd be very happy with it. And anyway, I want to say one other thing to you. I was very happy to read Tom's opinion of you, you have done a fantastic job for the town, the village, everyone.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Just so you know, you appreciate it.
I appreciate that a lot of confidence. Thank you.
Yep.
I have a quick, sorry if I can ask a question. If, worst-case scenario, and it seems goofy saying worst-case scenario, you said the normal funding is between 60 and 120,000. So if somebody, if we put in this application and say it was just village only, and we got the maximum, which would be about 100,000, the village would be on the hook for about 10. Like you said, some of that would be in-kind services, so probably not a lot of cash. So we'd end up with a hundred thousand dollar study for about 10,000 dollars worth of investment.
Correct.
Sounds pretty good to me.
And, and regardless, you're, and I, obviously, you're still not awarded the funds as of today. You know, you wouldn't be awarded the funds until April, and at that point, you still need to enter into a contract and accept the grant funds. So at that point, if things changed and the direction of the municipality changed, they could decide to, they could elect to not move forward with the project.
Is this something where we'd have to update the comprehensive plan?
This would be, this would assist in you updating the comprehensive plan. This could be a component, an appendancy, or a driving factor in other areas to update it. So this is a, not, this wouldn't force your hand to do that, this would be a benefit enhancement to that effort.
Yes, yes, we need it. No, it's terrible. Yeah.
No.
No, Jake, no. No.
That should be, that should be coming. I've generated a list to try to get people to serve on that.
Yeah, that would be extremely important. We really need to do that.
Do you need a commitment, must, tonight?
Say yes.
You do?
I, I mean, from, from my chair, knowing sooner rather than later is beneficial, obviously based on the timeline. If this is, I guess what we could say is, if you're willing to commit to move forward in investigating this a little further, that would probably be what I would suggest. If you're, we're not talking about actually committing you to spending any public money as of right now. The only time and effort going into this is my, my man-hours.
To put this together?
To put the application together, which is approximately 30 to 40 hours of time. So I wouldn't want you to be flippant with your decision to move forward if you were going to then decide to not submit at the last minute. However, I am happy to submit the application and do our best efforts to get the money.
Well, I for one, I think I would be definitely in favor of moving forward with the project.
Same here.
Absolutely. Make that motion.
You'll make that motion? Okay.
Sid had some time, yeah.
It was a second.
And I think one of the next steps would be...
When would grants be awarded?
So the, the way the program works is funding, there's a, there's a very detailed process. The applications are due on October 16th. Development committee review, they have multiple committees within the GTC. It goes through the development committee and then the planning committee. Development committee reviews it November and December, then there's a 30-day public review period, January through the first week of February. By the end of that public review period in February, you would likely know if your project was given a positive recommendation to the planning committee. The planning committee meets the second week of February, they make their decision the fourth week of February. So it would be known by the end of February if you were awarded funds. They would not be technically eligible to be spent until April 1st, which is the fiscal year for Genesee Transportation Plan. So you would know in February. But you wouldn't be able to move forward until April or later. I would suggest the next step would be that, if you were, were to consider doing it as a joint application would be, we could have a phone call or a, or a meeting with the supervisor.
I think that right now, we have a motion to accept or to move forward with this and in light of that, I will, you know, I'll make a call to Tom and uh see if they're interested in partnering.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, thank you, I apologize, it was, it took thirty minutes, but you probably didn't want me to speak for that long.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
So, I want to take the role.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right, I will um, I will contact the supervisors and uh discuss the, if you already have to some degree with him, if you're of it. And then if they are in favor of joining or partnering, that would happen probably at their meeting. Unless, next week. Thank you, man.